Ladies and gentlemen, would you please rise, pledge allegiance, we have two flags in here, we'll take the largest one. A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No, we're with the Knuckles. This meeting of the November 5th, Penn Trafford School District Board is called, we've called the order, and the President is unfortunately unable to be here this evening due to a family commitment and officer's apologies, so as Vice President, I'll take over this meeting. We will not have a full call this evening because we have no motions to vote on, so we'll run into special reports, and I'll try to deal with this more appropriately, but since I'm delivering the first special report on IU seven libraries, I'll speak followed by leading into Legislative Council. The Legislative Council part will be a little more involved, as we had our recent convention, PSBA convention, followed by a meeting with Representative Dunbar the following week, and also a little attention at a seminar related to Marcella Shale, all of which we'll try to condense in a simple presentation this evening, will still take about five minutes. Related to IU seven and the libraries, I was not at the IU seven meeting, I was away, there was nothing of specific notice that pertains to us that was worth discussing at this particular time, so we'll bypass that. The library meeting is also not a part of that decision, so I'll go into the next area, which is Legislative Council, and I refer my colleagues to the handout that you've had a chance to review to some degree, possibly not Mr. Petrucci, but it's an overview of what took place. This was at PASA, PASA and the PSBA School Leadership Conference in Hershey. And the theme again was a repeat of the previous year, it was called, "We Believe in Public Education." I went into a section of educational sessions, the first one was through Dr. Terry Madonna, and Dr. Madonna is well-known as a pollster in Pennsylvania, he uses an aggregate number of different polls to draw information from, what he gave us was information about two weeks old, we tried to consolidate it, but he's pretty much on target. He broke it down into categories, I only took the most highlighted, the most significant issues, he was talking about the presidential election, and he had predicted two weeks ago that it was going to be a toss-up, he saw a popular vote edge going to, based on his sources, going to Mitt Romney, but he saw the electoral edge going to President Obama. Whether that's going to continue to be the case, we'll soon find out. He went down into the Pennsylvania situation and how the outcome would be there, he pretty much said it's pretty, appears to be coming closer and closer to be a toss-up, thought the outcome of the vote would come, which he's been pretty close all the time, right out of what comes out of Lehigh Valley and the Philadelphia suburbs. Senator Casey talked about that, he thought he was still maintaining a slim margin, went into the Attorney General selection, he said a lot of that was still going to be determined on people's reaction to the handling of the Penn State scenario, and how that's going to be approached and how individuals will deal with it, some pro, some con, but that seems to be the only controversial item that's dealt with at this particular time. He got into the control of legislature, and what he basically said was, despite the margin of control that the Republicans do have, there's a lot more ideological difference between the membership, they don't come to agreement very well. That's why even with the governor, who's not, has not been having a lot of success getting his dominant party to be able to pass much legislation, there's too much disagreement, and so it's making, make it more and more difficult within the membership and also with the governor's influence to get something done, where there should be a lot more done, whether we like it or not, with such a majority held in both houses. I went into a couple of different seminars, one was a legislative update by the Director of Federal Relations for the National School Boards Association, and he was talking about the 113th Congress, a lot of things talked about, he talked about the Race to Top District Glance, Child Nutrition, Charter and Cyber Charter Schools, the ESAA reauthorization and appropriations. Appropriations thing was interesting because they haven't really approved a real appropriations plan, they have like a six-month plan going on right now that actually expires related to federal funding on March 27th, 2013, and the federal government is kind of not doing a lot, they've not been that effective, and they've got to get some things done here in order to come up with a real appropriations plan. The last issue, which is very scary, and we shared that right away when I was down, that relates to sequestration. And sequestration, and I'm going to simplify this, was a law that was generated to automatically cut federal programs by at least 8.2 percent. And on the back of the form I gave for my colleagues is a particular type of an appeal or a resolution that we can do to try to get this resolved, our legislators kind of backed away because elections are coming up and haven't done any of that. They had until January 3rd to come up with some way to approve and to allow that this sequestration does not take place, which is again is the automatic deduction of at least 8.2 percent of federal funding. Now that, how does that affect us? Well, that's in Title I programs, that's related to IDEA or Special Education, and it may or may not affect something, but heretofore has not been touched very much, and that's access funding. Access funding is very critical in the operation of school programs to support special education. They're all threatened, they've got to get off their rear ends and get something done and approached by January 3rd, if not, that deduction will take place in the 2013-2014 budget. Went into this next thing, this was also very candid, because this touched on some very sensitive issues for school boards, and this related to the PDA's role, and this was presented and done very candidly, I have to admire both women for the way in which they stood up and talked as candidly as possible about the function and actions recently, a lot related to the cheating scandal on the PSSA tests, they discussed a lot of issues as openly as possible. That was through Amy Morton and Carolyn Demarest, who were the Deputy Secretaries for the Department of Education. What they did was simply, they talked about a couple of things, which was the review of Act 41, and that's the process of watching for school systems, or predicting for school systems that will go into a financially troubled status. Right now they're evaluating all our school inputs, all of it throughout the state of Pennsylvania, for 2011-2012, determining what category in, they're trying to figure out who's going to be in danger going under, like the five or six school systems we have right now. And there are a number of criteria measuring it, and they've designed a very elaborate system to support those school systems, so they can continue on. What's good is they've also, they're also asking for data from all the school systems, wide-range forms, performance data and so on, which also incorporates the charter schools. And heretofore, they've kind of left them out of it. Hasn't touched the cyber charter schools yet, but it is hitting the charter schools, so they're going to have to come up with some clarification on what they do, what they don't do, how they perform, which is a good thing, we're all in that. There was also an interesting discussion about a district ultimately failing, like Duquesne had done, what's going to happen to it? Well, there's a law out there that says that, and this created a lot of attention, that if a school district goes under, such as Duquesne had done, that grades nine through 12, those students have a right to choose what high school they're going to go to, the nearest, the nearest high school near them, they have the right to go into, without exception, without qualification, they're accepted. Now, in K through eight, based on the law, there has to be some negotiation as to where these kids should go. So down the line, if we have failing school systems, this is something that is going to be somewhat of a concern related to where kids may or may not go. Hope to goodness we don't have it, but it could occur. We also got into about the Pennsylvania Department of Education not filing a waiver for No Child Left Behind. Remember we said there were about almost 40 school systems, 40 states in the United States applied to the federal government and are in the process or have been waived from all that unnecessary additional comprehensive ridiculous testing related to special education students, unfair testing, related to No Child Left Behind. Pennsylvania did not file. Their response was, we did not file because we're waiting for the results of the election. That was simply what it was stated, and their belief is that if Obama wins, if President Obama wins, then what will happen is, then we'll apply for the waiver, because President Obama has been allowing waivers to take places and pushed it to the forefront. If Romney wins, then it's likely that will be reversed, and it's going to be much more difficult, and the restrictions will be intensified related to No Child, or some variation of No Child. Everybody has their own program. Other things, it got into contracts, they told us we need to, we have to, and we've been very good about it, matter of fact, as a group, we stayed head-on the design of our superintendents' contracts, we're supposed to review those in some great depth, and at some stage before the end of the school year, we have to bring an updated report on where we are in compliance related to that superintendent's contract situation. Again, we're well ahead of it, we've worked well on it, and we feel we're well-prepared. The PSSA forensics, now that's the whole thing about the investigation and the great, how we saw exaggeration related to cheating in Pennsylvania. That was a hot topic, there must have been 30 minutes from everybody zeroing in at one angle or another about that issue. Pretty much what happened was, the two deputies indicated that it was a misinterpretation by the media. There was no acceptance, had something to do with a paper out in Philadelphia, and from that point, it went from that point forward, but in reality was, they said there weren't that many school systems that were involved in this potential process, and possibly schools within about 30, that's, now this is both the 500 school districts and 176 charter schools, in equal, that only representing both of them, now this 676 school units, that within 30 of them, there was some unusual variation of potential problem. As in every school in the system, there could be a school here and there, that's based on the PSSA results in 2009 through 2012, they've been investigating those, they're continuing on it, they have found some limited problem, but they have still many to go, and who knows what the outcome will be. Again, we're only talking 30 out of 676 combined charter and regular schools, public schools. And that pretty much handled that aspect. They based their study on patterns and handwriting, of the very little bit of the PSSAs that involve handwriting, but also was the, what they looked at was in patterns of erasures, right-to-wrong erasures, they actually found that too. It's kind of interesting, that's where the forensics piece came into play, they described that, how many erasures there were, period of times. So there were a few limited genuine problems, but nothing to what we've been led to believe, far from it. All right, I went to a bunch of, there were a lot of Pennsylvania Schools Educational Excellence Fairs, there were 40 booths there, they have that every year, I listed the various things that were part of it for my colleagues, I'm not going to go over them all, we had school systems out here that were represented, and Hemphill had a school program that was dealing with the Enviro-Lution, they called it, which was basically how they're trying to work on zero landfill. I'm not going to go through them all, there were about 12 or 13, I spent a lot of time with the kids at organizations. There was one group I was very impressed with, they did something on mass customized learning, was on dealing with grade level spanning, these school systems, they were from Sunrise Estates and Harrison Park Elementary Schools into Penn Trafford School District. Were they good? They were really good. Matter of fact, my colleagues that were there were impressed with the aggressive positive attitude of those presenters, and they wanted to go back for more and more knowledge related to this topic. But it was, it was very well done, our group did a great job, Dr. Butler well acknowledged them in his recent blog, and it was very impressive. I'm not going to go over the others I was a part of. PSBA platform, I only took, there was 109 platform items there, and I'm not going to go through them all, my colleagues get tired even looking at it, but there were three that were of some importance, and the three I thought were interesting were actually a trend statewide. Now, at these, at this determination of PSBA, there were 500 school districts represented, the reality was, there were only 160 there, excuse me, 130 there, and 130 school systems represented in voting the direction or focus of where we wanted to go with PSBA as far as our views and attitudes. Despite all that, we were together, but three issues came up that I thought were an interesting trend, just three, and I'll just mention them, and one was, there was a plank item that said to support legislation which removes work stoppage and strikes as bargaining tactics in the collective bargaining process. Now, that, to fore, had never been out there, and that's in some degree attempting to eliminate the bargaining rights, there was quite a debate over that, never expected to see that happen, because it never got to the floor in the previous years I was there. Well, it did get to the floor, it was a written, it was a written one that came up, was discussed, and it was only defeated by 57 percent to 42 percent. So to me, that was a significant change in what has happened over the years. Even though there are very few strikes or work stoppages, it's still a very testy subject, and it's required more and more support from the PSBA area. That's number one. Number two, related to supporting legislation that restores the authorization for any school, restores the authorization for any school system to levy and collect Markantow or Business Privilege Taxes. Nobody wanted a part of that, it went down 80 to 20. We didn't want that back, we didn't want it on our hands, there were people that were businessmen among the board members, spoke about it, and it went down very, very fast. Very little discussion went quickly, was ripped out of the plank structure. And the last thing was, support legislation to require any student that receives public funds for educational purposes to take the PSSA and other state assessments. Now, that was an interesting thing, because we really became very clear there, that was, that only passed by 60 to 40 percent vote, and it should have passed by a lot more, but what we dislike as a group across the state of Pennsylvania, we're bound by the fact we see no great value in the PSSAs. So because of the dislike, that's why it did not pass as well as it should have. Those are the only three items I could say related to it. I was happy to see that Nick, with Mr. Petrucci, would like this, for the first time in all these years, because he's been a great supporter of Career and Technology Center, they finally established a statewide task force to take and get more involved, to get to focus on more than just going to college for our kids, get them jobs, and do it the right way. So that has come to the forefront too. Getting into the next area, there were legal updates, I have a copy for all of you, I'm not going to go through them right now, all I can say is, it covers some areas related to the President of the Pennsylvania School Boards Listeners Association updated us on recent laws in the past year, that dealt with student rights of discipline, special education, state-created danger, that was the concussions, the traumatic brain injury area, employment law, employees' discipline, the Right to Know Law, the Sunshine Act. And I'll give you all copies of it, you can look at it, they are consolidated, it's not with this group right now, that's a whole other lesson in itself. But you'll find that generally, school districts gained in better favor and better control in relation to all these areas, by far, probably about 90 percent to 10 percent margin where it benefited the school districts in these wide varieties of areas in recent legislation. Okay, the next thing, and as I get near the end here, they also, I went into a number of different exhibits, and we, these are things you had to look at and catch some attention, I shared it with, Dr. Butler, who was ahead of me in almost every place I went to, so I didn't visit as much, and also Brett was well aware of a lot of these, but we talked about the National Corporate Purchasing Buy Boards and the Municipal Revenue Service, which is a tax lien management service, but we discussed that in the past, and some things related to food service purchases and so on, there are a number of other things, not that critical. Let me just jump ahead to some other events, and this is where Mr. Kachasik and myself went to a meeting with Mr. Dunbar, so it's a continuation of issues that came up at the Legislative Council. And we went to Irwin, and we were there with Bruce Light from the township, and there was supervisors from Norwin and someone from North Irwin Manor, all with the constituency with, related to Representative Dunbar. But we focused on charter school, and we also talked about PlanCon, and then we were approached by Representative Dunbar about raising taxes related to volunteer fire departments. So he asked him for opinion, and we, I'll address that one first, it's the simplest, wanted to see what we could do as a school system to try to improve the interest of young people and community members to be a part of the volunteer fire service without raising taxes. So we discussed that, and that's going to be involved more later on. The other two issues were more critical. PlanCon, we all know PlanCon, the 30 percent refund we need in order to build a lot, Mr. Dunbar was very, Representative Dunbar was very clear, he said there is absolutely no one in the state of Pennsylvania that is bringing forth any legislation trying to re-initiate, restore anything related to PlanCon. He sees no one on either side of the party area. Maybe it will come with, I don't know why, he doesn't know where, or with, or who at this particular time, but there appears to be that they'll pay off, who's already committed money beyond that particular point, it's unlikely. And the last thing was charter schools, and I saved probably the best for last. I was there Wednesday night when they had the vote on the Senate bill, and it was very close, they thought they were in then four or five votes, it was at 6 o'clock at night on that Wednesday evening at the conference, and then all of a sudden, three hours later, they're 20 to 25 votes short, it wasn't going to make it. Hey, my gosh, certain legislators had a great change of conscience, and it's not going to happen, the charter school bill coming forward, which takes away local control totally, which increases the expansion of charter school, increases some accountability, not a lot, and relies heavily on a commission to work out the disparities, the performance disparities and the money disparities between the cyber charter schools and charter schools and the public schools. You know, this was all going to be taken care of, and, fine, they had great conscience and were very happy, that wasn't the case at all. Those 20 to 25 legislators backed away because they inserted another item with a half a million dollars in that Senate bill and didn't notify the group, so they got angry. The legislators got angry, and in theory, they would probably have been a part of voting and approving it, but because this item was slid in for another half a million dollars in that same charter school bill, they backed away from it. Mr. Dunbar said, it's coming back, and he said, be prepared, unless it's a miracle, it's going to pass. He said, we may tighten up more on the value of the commission and speed up its work, but we're going to look at that commission as the means by which, and we all agree, and this is across the state, Republican, Democrat, there are disparities in performance accountability and money accountability that we need to take care of, but we're going to let the commission do it. So that's where we are at this particular time, and that is all I have. So let me continue on to Career and Technology, Mr. Petrucci.
Just want to ask a question, on the charter school issue now. Example of Penn Trafford, what are further steps that would have to be done, if you initiate here? Is this, certainly a petition, is that correct?
It'll go to the state.
Go to the state?
Yes, we'll have, we have a cursor information role in it, in the process, but we don't approve. We'll lose the ability to approve. We're disciplined.
Yeah, but our tax dollars will pay for it?
Yes.
Oh, man. In other words, we have no control over that?
No control. They'll get the money, and if we find disparities at a later time, it will be our responsibility to prove that they were not set up or not performing to an adequate standard. At that, they already have the money, it already be allotted to them, that we have to go through legal grounds to recover and prove that they're not providing what we believe is satisfactory, so we can become on the defensive role rather than the offensive role.
And I would say it's going to pass, what you're saying?
It seems very likely, I'm getting nothing that tells me anything different than that.
Wow.
I'm sorry, anything else? Anybody have anything else I know? Mr. Petrucci, would you like to pick up on something we're happy, such as?
Okay, I'll discuss.
Career and Technology?
October 17th, we had our meeting, Rich Albright was stepping down as President and Chairperson, and Barb Vialla from Norwin, nominated for Chairperson, you'll get your petitions and mail as well as your invitation, December 19th Christmas banquet, and Robert Mc Donald from Hemphill would be the Vice Chairperson on your ballot, and also for your invitation. Penn Trafford, as of right now, well, as of last week, unless something happened just recently, is still the only school district that voted in favor of the renovations. Talked to the supervisor, Dr. Alwood, and other ones, the other school districts, it's still, it's not negative, it's not positive, it's just still a more or less a limbo. And so I asked him, I said, how does superintendent feel about this? Well, this is Dr. Kerr, and also assuming that's my president, he is so strong in support of this, he even went to Fraser School District. Now, Fraser is the 10th school district that goes to VOTAC. They do not reside in West Warner County, so they have to pay tuition for all their students. They do not have a vote, they have to go along with our rules and just pay tuition, just like with students from, we'll say, down the valley, when they come to Penn Trafford, it's paid tuition, and have to live by all the rules. And they went, they just, Mr. Dr. Kerr just went along, just explained everything to the school board of Fraser, so they understood everything. But again, Fraser does not have a seat, they do not have a vote, but that was kind of... So anyway, that's how supportive that man's been. Now, there will not be, our next meeting was scheduled for November 21st, 21st is Thanksgiving Eve, can't get a quote. So now, next meeting, the only people that addressed this renovations with urgency is Penn Trafford. And the next meeting is going to be December 19th, and that's the same night we have our banquet, and again, all board members, superintendent, they said, please come, enjoy the five-person, all those kids do a great job, then I want you people to come on upstairs. And I am going to put our table, I'm going to see, well, I'm going to pursue this, on accelerator, on the brake, on accelerator, on the brake, you only win to push or not to push. I think the board is unanimous, but I don't think they've gotten back to their boards like this board is cooperating, and I'm going to see how it stands. And so on the 24th, there was a, October 24th, there was a meeting of superintendents. So now I'm confused how things are going, so I called Dr. Butler, he was out of the building, and I talked to Dr. Harris, the meeting on the 24th was for superintendents, and I asked if one of those two gentlemen could go to the superintendent's meeting and get back to us what was discussed by the superintendents, by the meeting on October 24th. And Mr. Harris, could you respond to what was discussed on the meeting on the 24th?
Sure, very similar to what she said, had some discussions, wasn't positive, wasn't negative, just some concerns over the cost and the need of the project.
My impression is that, talking to people, I didn't go to that meeting, I was at an outreach board meeting at Penn State, is that there's adjustments that have been made and will be made, and eventually, they will, everyone feels like after some consternation and some, you know...
Is the reduction in cost a little bit dark, or...
I think, my impression is that it'll go through, as is...
Nine million dollars?
That's, I mean, I talked to people about two weeks ago, and I just, I think that everybody realizes the dire need, that this isn't something that is unnecessary, there's boilers that aren't going to make it through any day now, they could break, so that's my, that's my take on it, from talking to some people.
That's, Mr. Namy? Mr. Leonard, Dr. Butler, myself, went down, we got the impression at that meeting, they wanted to get this passed in October, and that meeting, I believe, was in August, and I thought there was urgency, and I pushed myself as much as I could push, but I'm not at all of the board meetings. Right now, it's mostly a limbo. I'd like for everyone to come, I'm going to bring up on the 19th, I'm presenting on the floor, and I'm just going to ask everyone to make an opinion, to give me a discussion, everybody's welcome, enjoy the meeting, and also go on up and observe the meeting, but that's...
Mr. Petrucci, I'm on the 19th, now that would be something we would expect to see, members of the other nine districts, we'd have somebody there to address if we do choose to come and speak our piece.
Yes.
I don't know how many of those districts would like to try to duplicate the efforts that are set forth at the VOTAC, but I know this district wouldn't want to have to try to duplicate the efforts that are put together as a cohesive effort down there.
I agree, and, you know, well, you've been there, there'll be some board members, the superintendents there enjoying the festivities, and almost everybody goes home then, okay? But I wish they would go upstairs and then enjoy the, you know, the meeting, and see how things are going on. Yeah, I go around the board table, I don't hear any negative or any positive, I think I make your support, but I don't, it's not strong, you know, and like Dr. Butler just said, you know, boilers, et cetera, it's, I mean, that building is three years younger than our building, and we know the situation with our building, so I don't, it's not easy, it's more awkward, it's like, you know, sometimes you think you want to be a ramrod, and then sometimes you think you've got to be, got to have a little bit of a cotton ball approach too, you know, you've got to make sure you don't do the right thing at the right time, say the right word, don't get anybody upset with you, if you want to get the project done, you've got the roof and the boilers and the windows, and it's not for any addition. Okay, and now for the good report, the five variety of cold cuts, a vegetable tray, had probably about 10 different veggies on it, had about six or seven different cheeses, cookie trays, cream puffs, pecan pumpkin pies, water, fruit punch, lemonade, and iced tea. So that was, that was the best part of the meeting, because that's the frustration, but that's, that's all I have, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. Petrucci. Thank you, Mr. Petrusi. You can move into the recreation boards, even with Pen Township.
I don't know if I have a report as long as those. Everybody still awake? Little humorous. We had our meeting last month, and just a couple of highlights, where work on the first phase of the park renovation, the dog park is nearly complete. That'll include a area for large and small breed dogs, and that, most of the work is, is completed. The official opening won't be until spring this year, so you'll have to wait. The driveway is not totally completed, however, the parking lot is completed, and a good portion of the walking trails are completed. But then, again, this officially is not gonna open till spring of next year. We are also working on our budget for next year. We'll discuss that the second Thursday of the month, or the third Thursday, it is Thanksgiving, well, the fifteenth, I believe. Because that Thanksgiving is earlier this month, so we'll have an official budget approved next meeting, and I'll report those results in December. And that is all, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chasseck. Trafford Borough?
Thank you, Dr. Trey. Our meeting was last week, on the twenty-ninth. We discussed the, at that time, well, yeah, they postponed trick or treat on the thirty-first to the Saturday, which was the third, like many communities in the area. At the meeting, we discussed the Halloween, the parade was the twenty-eighth, but again, you can tell the rain hit us and everything. These ladies had organized it, and all I do is sell fifty-fifty tickets, and so I'm really a very minded part of it. But these ladies, they had a Plan B, with no parade, of course, but the Plan B was everything inside the American Legion. Now, I don't know how many of you people have been at Trafford American Legion, but the hall was, it's nice size, it's not real big, but it's nice size, but it was packed. People came there, you know, and there's food, gifts, costumes, prizes, and for all different age brackets. Some didn't show up. But I thought for the weather conditions, I thought that the Plan B worked out very well. There was nice attendance, it was a great atmosphere. They had a magician there, and they had a balloon artist there. Every kid was carrying around, you know, make me a dog, you know, make me a building, and then, these guys here, they were, they were magnificent. They just, well, they put, they make me a cart, and then make a wheel for the kids, and those guys were really talented, and that went over real well. We budgeted eighteen hundred dollars every year, and that comes from the auction money for the Halloween parade and Halloween festivities. And the, we spent about sixteen hundred this year, which we worked out well. And the trick or treat night, firemen were very, very cooperative, again, watching kids across the road, all kind of lights and flashers, and everything worked out to be very safe. And we also had a, we, we are going through our budgets, preliminary budgets for next year, and we're used to giving five hundred dollars for different groups. And since the borough is not funding us this year at all, we're applying up the cutback, and we're gonna, everybody had the, wants a donation, is now gonna have to submit their budgets. Then we look at their budgets, then we're gonna decide if we give as much last year we gave them this year, or we're gonna cut back. And we get to baseball, the softball, the senior citizens, didn't get to the library yet, the libraries, they taught us libraries, I don't think we, oh, yeah, Trafford Theater Factory is one. But we're gonna have to do some cutting. There's just no way we, with that, our fund balance is still twenty-two thousand nine hundred dollars, which is good, but that, that can go, that can be, you know, real quick. And BYU, they, again, they told me to thank your, thank Mr. Leonard again for the thing here, the geese, you know, it's, uh, they didn't come back. Y'all, you did a great job.
Well, I'll tell you what, with our dog park being such as, inviting all those dogs in, there's gonna be some goose dinners there. There's a lot of geese in the dog park right now. A whole lot of geese.
And the Holiday Happenings is going to be, um, December the first, Saturday, and they have all kind of, we donate, that's their, that's their donation. We donate a thousand dollars for the Holiday Happenings, and the rec board funding too. That's all. That's all for the auction money. And our next meeting is November twenty-sixth. That's all, Mr. Vice President.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Petrusi. Nothing for Penborough. Step into P-Tark, Mrs. Zissang.
Hi, thank you. Had our meeting today. The fund balance last year at this time was forty-two thousand. This year is forty-five thousand. As I mentioned before, that's mostly attributed to the reduced cost of mailing all the programs out. Cheryl gave us some interesting numbers today of, over the, looking at the last ten years, the total contributions versus the total number, amount of grants received. Over, since two thousand and two, we have, the total contributions of all participating organizations was eight hundred and twenty-one thousand nine hundred and thirty-two dollars. During that same timeframe, we've received nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars, nine hundred and eighty thousand five hundred and sixty-five dollars in grants. Some areas have, have made up exceptionally well. For example, Penborough, their annual contribute, during that period of time, their contributions was approximately forty-one hundred dollars. They've had a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars in grants, okay? Trafford did very well, approximately forty-two thousand dollars in fees, and a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars in grants. So if you want more details on the numbers, I have, I have all the community's numbers here.
How much did the school district get?
I know. Okay, the school district contributed four hundred and nine thousand dollars.
And what was our return?
We have no return.
Okay.
Okay. Um, there's some upcoming programs. One is a free program for senior stretch and strength, starting November seventh, in the mornings, Wednesday, ten fifteen to eleven a.m., at the Shelley Proskin Recreation Center. Let me know if you have any questions about that. There's gonna be a free concert, Dwayne Maguga combo, it's a senior citizen dance, I should say, and that's November fifteenth, from seven to nine p.m., at the Shelley Proskin Center again. Let me know. And the holiday kickoff concert is on Saturday, November seventeenth, and that's five, is that Pen Middle, and that's five dollars per adult and two dollars per student, and it'll feature the Pen Trafford Community Band. Okay. Today, we had a lot of discussion about how do we actually calculate raises for Cheryl and Lisa, her assistant, Cheryl, the director, and we came up with an evaluation system. She's gonna have a base salary, and anything above the base salary will be based on her performance in three areas. One of the areas is how does the P-Tark building perform? Are we able to balance the budget between the income and the expenses? What about the overall operational costs and program enrollment? How program costs compares to revenue? So we are, we will be working at, that'll go into place for two thousand and thirteen. We're gonna have a new sign down at the Shelley Proskin Building, and that's being prepared by the graphics arts department at the high school. That's all I have. Did I miss anything, Nick?
Thank you, Mrs. Zissang.
Thank you.
Mr. President, one, one quick thing. I forgot to pass, I'll pass out to this side. There's pictures of the progress of the park that I brought with me. Thank you.
That's right.
Yeah, they're good. That's for you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Petrusi. And we'll step into the next area, which deals with executive session, one being proposed and the one that we just had. We have one at six o'clock, executive session, last week, one was seven, and it was basically to identify agenda items and then to discuss personnel issues, legal issues, and litigation. The executive session, which we could schedule at this particular time, there is no need, so we won't have an executive session. And then step into general information, and I'll turn the meeting over to Dr. Butler.
Thank you, Dr. Trey. First, I'd like to recognize Mr. Vinton. And Mr. Vinton, could you wave? Thank you very much. Could you introduce your students today?
Um, we have Alyssa Waldron over here. We have Mr. Bartholomew right here, and we have, I think, Mr. Kearns, Michael Kearns, and Charles McWells, I believe, somewhere over there. So we're doing the best we can here, so.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate it. And if you go to the YouTube channel, which is...
Yes, PT Warrior Video.
PT Warrior Video, you can watch yourself on tape, which is a scary thought, trust me. So thank you very much, and thank you, students, for being here. At this time, we have talked in the past month or so about work that needs to be done at the high school. We do not wanna get into a situation where the vote tech school is at the present time, where it's do or die, as far as fixing things and making sure infrastructure and other aspects of the building are functional. And we talked about that that would be one building, regardless of what configuration is occurring outside of the high school, that the high school will be here, it'll be an integral part of our school district, regardless of any other configuration. So let's move forward with looking in and researching how we can maybe do a project there to get the school up to date. And working with Hank, we've started, we did get a plan con project in before the deadline. Whether it's funded or not is probably a little doubtful, but we did do that. And so now, we're talking, the next option, which would be start getting money for the project and really starting the process toward an eye of, the idea of getting a project started in June of two thousand and fourteen. So with that, Brett is going to introduce our bond counsel and underwriter, and they're here to answer any questions.
Yeah, I think they have some information for you, and they'll answer any questions. So with us tonight, we have Mr. Christopher Brewer from Benzmore and Scholl, he is our bond counsel, and Mr. Antonio Masiti from PNC Capital Markets, who is our bond underwriter. So gentlemen, the floor is yours.
Some handouts to pass there, I'm gonna try to...
Yeah.
Let's split them up.
Let's see. Make sure you get the... Let's see. We short, down there?
We're long.
We're long.
Everybody has the copy in front of them. Good evening, everybody. I apologize for my tardiness. I did not expect to see a big orange sign, Pleasant Trafford Borough, with that being said. The front part of your presentation is, I'd like to get this out of the way first, it's, under some of the new legislation for financial institutions, we're, we have to provide the fact that we, in fact, are serving as a bond underwriter. We are in no way trying to give you securities advice, municipal advisory services. We are here with the purpose of structuring and placing the district's potential bond issuance in the capital markets with public investors. And that's what those first couple of pages state under this, under the disclosures. So flipping, I think, to the, one of the very relevant points for the district would be on page one, and that's the recent interest rate trends. And as you well know, from looking at your investments, there's really not much happening there. And it's, when you see interest rates in the short term below one percent, actually below half of a percent, you know that there's issues there. Conversely, though, when you need to borrow money, guess what? You're in a very, very good position. And that's what is reflected on, on page one of this, of this presentation. We are basically, give or take, five to ten basis points, we are at all-time market lows right now. So Pen Trafford School District in need of renovations district-wide, specifically at the high school at this juncture. You could not be entering the market at a much better time. And what was amazing, when we refinanced the debt in two thousand and eight, we kinda said the same thing. While we're at historical lows in the market, we can't believe the savings being generated by refinancing, yet here we are in an even better market. So from that standpoint, the district should take a lot of comfort that, okay, we know we have projects, we know we need to borrow money to approach those projects, but we know our interest expense will be at all-time lows. So that should give you some comfort there. Why are we at these all-time lows? A lot of it has to do with the economy in general. World affairs, geopolitical issues are keeping the American investment as a desired product. And with demand comes lower prices. Therefore, the rates are low because we are seeing a lot of investment. And that's not only foreign investment in U.S. securities, as you see the, if you see the benchmark ten-year treasury, which is shown on page one, touching on historical lows. Right now, the ten-year, ten-year note, U.S. Treasury note, about one point six eight percent at close of business today. So we touched at one point, one point three eight percent on that. Usually, that's been hovering, approaching three percent. So at being at one point six eight, you can see where the overall environment is. Page two of the handout is really, there's a lot of noise on that graph, but I think it's important to reflect, why is there a big demand for U.S. taxes at municipal securities right now? And you can see that in the blue bars, that represents positive inflows into municipal bond funds. And as you can see, when rates started to tick up, we saw the stock market start to rage back in late two thousand and ten and into early two thousand and eleven. People were, basically, bond funds were hemorrhaging money. They were losing all their investors, and that's represented by the red bars there in the early, late two thousand and ten, early two thousand and eleven timeframe. When we did not see that those cogs catch, or those gears catch for the economy to turn, people to feel safe back in equities, they turned around and put the money right back into municipal bond funds for safety. Some form of fixed income, even though it was low, some protection against, you know, fluctuations, potential fluctuations in tax code, and low and behold, you saw a great demand back in municipal securities, and that has, that has lasted. That has been greatly sustained throughout the latter part of two thousand and eleven, and to this point, throughout two thousand and twelve. At the same time, all that demand has continued to force rates down and hold them down. And that's really what this graph is showing, is that the demand is still very, very strong for U.S. municipal taxes on debt. Flipping to page three will lead into another kind of post-crisis, financial crisis issues, and that is credit rating. While there's been a demand for bond issues, and there's been demand for fixed-rate securities out there, even at these low rates, investors are still picking and choosing, okay? And what that really relates to is, what is my risk? What is, what is the credit risk I'm willing to take for what spread? And if you look at, on page three, to the left side of that chart, pre-crisis, you can see that there was a lot of reaching for yield, so to speak, that investors were basically buying anything. Tell me a rate, and let me think about it, I'll probably buy it. So in essence, if you, there's a triple-A benchmark, which would be the highest-rated credit security. Using that as a proxy or a baseline, if you were rated in the double-A category, you were only trading about ten basis points off of that proxy, or point one zero percent. If you were in the A-rated category, average spread to that proxy, about twenty-five basis points, point two five percent. And if you were in the triple-B or B-double-A categories, which is the last category of investment-grade ratings, public ratings, you were only about forty basis points off of that. approaching 350 basis point spread. We saw the AA, or I'm sorry, the A at about 150 basis points, and the AA starting to approach the 40 basis point mark. Now, things have calmed down a little bit, but you can see a pretty steady stream of where that interest rate spread is for credit risk. And right now, on average, AA about 25 basis points, single A about 70 basis points, and in the triple B, B double A category, about 150, 660 basis point spread. Why do I bring this and why is this important? We just had a rating call, Brett and the underwriting staff with my shop, with Moody's Investor Service, and going to them and giving them a good story, which Penn Trafford can tell, a solid financial performance, not just in one single year, but over recent years, which is what they look at. They, they want to look at a definitive three-year period, but they will look at a five-year comprehensive and they'll look forward. What is the district planning to do? What are they planning to do as far as their fund balance? Are they drawing from the fund balance? Or have they had healthy collections, no major economic issues in, within the district orders? And that is the great story to tell. What we want to see Moody's come back with is a sustained rating. Right now, at the last rating juncture in 2008, the district was in the top of the A category at an A1. What we're looking at is hopefully sustaining that or having them consider a very nice financial performance, could we, in fact, give them an upgrade? That is completely up to Moody's Investor Service. We will have that rating back early part of next week. And that will help us give a, a much better tone as to what kind of rates the district will be seeing. Obviously, if there is an improvement, rates get better. Right now, we're just considering an A with municipal bond insurance, which again, that's another topic. I don't want to spend a lot of time on that, but that will be something we will dual-track. The use of municipal bond insurance, which the district has used in the past, versus just going on your underlying rating alone. The reason why that's questionable right now is during that financial crisis, we saw all of our top-tier bond insurers fall. Why did they fall? A lot of them had investments in commercial-backed mortgage portfolios. They, when markets tanked, mortgage securities tanked, so did these bond insurers. So, they saw their ratings and their capital structures fall, so much so that most of them are not even rated currently in the public markets, and there's basically one standing with one brand-new municipal bond insurer coming in, which has just started to test the market. Investors are very leery now of municipal bond insurance. The one is Assured Guaranty, the other one is called Build America Mutual. And Assured Guaranty has been the loan standing entity, and right now, they are at the, they went from being AAA to being the low AA category. So, it becomes a matter of economics, what is the bond premium, bond insurance premium they want to charge, versus the rates you will benefit at lower rates because of the insured paper, versus what you could do on your own underlying credit rating. And that, and then that becomes a factor of what the market wants to pay. Will they pay up for the insurance, i.e. lower interest rates? Or will they say, you know what, insurance is really not worth that much to us right now, we'd rather just take you on your underlying credit? So, again, that is something we will continuously dual-track throughout the school district's potential bond issuance. So, flipping to page four. The district has incredible flexibility with how it wants to pursue the structure of its new debt. Many districts that have kind of a plateau of debt that is 10, 15, 20 years long, 30 years long, if they need to minimalize an impact in the current tax structure, they really don't have much choice. They need to really take the debt, throw it long past the end of their current debt, and hope for as little interest expense or principal maturing on top of their current debt structure. Penn Trafford has a very unique ability, very envious across Pennsylvania School District, where your current debt structure ends in fiscal year 2015. And that gives you the ability to take this new debt and borrow it out long and keep the payments extremely low. It gives you the ability, if you're okay with your current debt levels, to keep it right there, wrap the debt around that structure, and pay it off very quickly with very little interest expense. Or, the potential of anticipating debt in the future, in the near future, you could have a step-down structure, which would basically allow your debt to go from its current level and drop each year out to maturity, so that when and if you would need more money for more capital projects, you could layer them on without seeing an impact in your current debt service allocation in your budgets. And that's what we've presented here. If going across in columns one, two, and three, you can see a 20-year-level annual debt structure, a wraparound debt structure, and a step-down structure. And what I wanted to point out here is while each of these will be a $10 million issue, the capitalized interest would be the component you're borrowing so that you don't have an increase over your current during 2013 and 2014. And that would be in the level annual case, where you would take this $10 million and borrow it out over 20 years. While that would give you the lowest overall annual payment, match your useful life of the assets being financed, it would throw off more interest expense to the district over time. Wouldn't be a bad strategy, especially given where long-term interest rates are. It's just, is that the structure that, well, we probably won't need more than that for the time being, and we can get past our hurdles, and that might be a smart thing to do, is match the useful life. As you can see there, because you're going out longer, estimated cost of borrowing, about 3.46%, and your overall interest expense down in box D, about $3.5 million worth of interest on that $10 million borrowing. Now, if we move to a wraparound structure, you could see a drastic difference in that overall interest expense and cost of borrowing. That's because your debt would basically only be about seven years. If you were matching your approximate $2.7 million local share right now, you could actually mature that $10 million in seven years. You would pay just under $400,000 in interest expense because you're keeping the debt so short. And you would, you would realize that we still would have room out there if we decided to delay projects further and didn't borrow immediately. So, you would be looking at a final maturity of this debt in 2000, fiscal year 2019. So, you would basically extend it four more years out to pay off this debt. And again, your interest expense would be very short there, but you would maintain your existing $2.7 million local share. And the last scenario option would be a step-down structure. And in that scenario, it's basically in between the two. Your debt would mature about 12 years out instead of 20 or seven. Your interest expense would be just under $1 million in interest carry over that time period, but it would give you the ability to watch your debt level, or your debt as a, as a percentage or as a component of your overall expenditures, continue to tick down from your $2.7 million level. And I'll show that on a graph that follows. In this way, you have the ability in the future to not only layer on new debt, but now set your millage at a new rate for your, the millage equivalent for your debt service. And if we flip to page five, it's the numeric options, numeric version of these options, again, going across with your 20-year level debt. You can see where your annual payment is about $750,000, and it would go out 20 years. In the wraparound structure, you can see where we're targeting your $2.7 million, and we can pay that off in a much shorter timeframe. And in the step-down structure, you can see where your payments stage are 2.7 million through 14, which you already, which you currently have, but then we're going to step down to 2.2, and then to 1.7, 1.5, 1.4, 1.2 and a half, 1.1. And that can be structured anyway in working with Brett. We can structure those steps. And again, that's, that's nothing but a result of the flexibility that the district has because of its current portfolio. And on page six, the final page, you can see this graphically represented, and I think this might tell the best tale. If you follow the red line, which is the 20-year level, you can see what happens. Yes, the debt will drop immediately after 20, the peak in 2014, you will add a little bit on to your, $750,000 on to your total current level in 2015, but then you will flatten out at $750,000 for 20 years. The green line represents the wraparound, and you can see that you will maintain your $2.7 million peak out to 2019, and then it will drop off, and your debt will mature. This $10 million will completely mature in that timeframe. And then lastly, the blue structure, that would represent your step, or basically a declining slope, if you will, which will give you the flexibility of maintaining a shorter-term debt this time around, maturing the debt rather quickly, keeping the interest expense low, and also providing the ability to layer on potential new borrowing, if need be, and not see an increase to your current peak. And those, those are really the options, again, can be manipulated, can be massaged to pick your level because of the district's current position. And it's, it's really going to be a board decision, which is very nice to have, as to which structure you would like to select. And with that, I will open it up to questions before I turn it over to Chris Brewer.
Which one is, this is my second, third, really. I did always do the wraparound, okay?
That's correct.
The tiered one, are there many who'll do the tiered one, the step-down?
If they have the opportunity to do so. Many, many districts do not have that flexibility. And the reason, they do one of two things. They're either going to borrow the majority of their debt now and take it at the current level so it doesn't peak above where they're paying now, if it can be done, or they want to minimize that hit on their current debt service. Most will do a wraparound, because this way, they keep the current tax equivalent as low as possible, especially giving our, given our relatively new constraints, Act One and what have you, especially with PlanCon being eliminated at this point. The very fact that the district has two things working in its favor, number one, existing debt service ending in fiscal '15, as well as the potential of more projects ahead, of more renovation ahead, the tiered structure will eliminate that, that low base that you will immediately have to stack on top of. It will instead drop off, so that if you even wait one, two more years before you add on to a project, now you're at an even lower peak that you would have to stack that on top of. So, it is a very, it's a very optimal situation.
Because our last project, we spread out like, we saw you, in three or four years, the time we started, the time we completed. And that's why we did the wraparound. And that's what I thought. And you're right about, it's the least affected one of tax payrolls, is correct.
That's correct.
If we decide to, well, Brett may involve this too, I guess, you want to start initiating at, get your architect going on this. Hank, you can pitch in on this too, if you want to. How's the timeframe set on this? If we want to time it, you know, 4:15, when it expires, you know, that's really, I think, the most economical way of doing it. Maybe I'm wrong, that's my, I don't see as adding debt to an old debt if it's not necessary right now, but.
How's the timeframe, Brett? You want to add something to that too? You think the 2015 is where I approach, and you think we prepare before that?
Well, I, I think the way that Tony just described, the way we could do the step-down, you know, we get the money now, we start doing the work now, but we're not going to see any effect on our debt at all. You know, we're going to keep paying what we're paying currently. We're in a great position, and then as we move down the next several years and the next projects come in line, well, first of all, we'll have, we'll have an idea of what the total cost of the high school project would be. That would be our second borrowing is any excess, we need over $10 million. Then, we do that deal, I would assume, the same way, so that when we're getting through that project and we're ready to go to the rest of the district, we would do a third borrowing to cover that part, and we'd layer that in as well. So, bottom line is, there, there's not going to be any negative impact on the millage for the next 20 years.
That's with a step-down, Brett? Is that with a wrap-around?
That's with the step-down.
And a wraparound, you can add millage to go along, correct?
Well, with the wraparound, we're just, we're going to pay all this debt off over a very short period of time, so then if we did another borrowing, we'd be carrying more capitalized interest because we couldn't put new debt on until eight years out. Did I say that correctly?
That's correct.
Yeah, well, our situation is here, since there's no PlanCon, is that, I think that, I'm just one person speaking, if the high school has to be addressed first, because it is in need and it does get the worst juice. And then we have to see what we have left over after we've done addressing high school.
Right. And that gives us, this gives us the ability to do that, absolutely.
The tiered?
Yes, step-down, correct.
That's right.
Brett, you have page five up there, Brett. Maybe I'll measure, but I have to-
Yes, sir.
So, if this 10, this is a $10 million borrowing, is that correct? So, if this was in a vacuum by itself, and there wasn't a second borrowing, it's just this one. My rain, those numbers write that, you know, you're zero and zero, and we're currently 2.7 million. So, from a budgetary standpoint, if you were looking at a second project to push into this three, four years out, that is dollars that could be basically set aside in capital improvements funds as well. So, you could be layering 2.7, 2.7, then 1.5, 1, 1.2, 1.5, again, you know, to pick a date in there. So, you would have that budgetary annual savings plus the ability to layer in another bond. So, that, that's the huge advantage of the step-down.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
So, the challenge there from a board perspective is, if that is the plan, those monies do go into a capital improvements fund for a future project.
Right. And if we get, if we get stuck and the second phase of the project isn't moving forward, not raise, borrow the money, right, we put that millage aside into the capital improvement fund and have that available so that we don't lose that millage, but then also have those dollars available to do the next project.
And therefore, you could designate those as an equity contribution to reduce your next borrowing. And it wouldn't be part of fund balance because it would be designated funds.
Correct.
Would it, would it be possible to get this page six with the step-down, how it would look with the, you know, added project, you know, the, with the add-on stacking it? Like, say, if we do a $20 million and then another one, just to-
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
To give an idea of what it would, where we would be at, what we would look like.
Yes, we certainly can provide that. Talk to the area under those two.
Any other questions for Tony?
Before we go to our bond counsel, the wonders of technology, I was able to, I have a rough draft for you of a timeline of a building project. I was hesitant to share it with you, but I think, just because it's kind of a work in progress, but I do, I do think it's important, as, as we try to visualize and offer a framework for, for the bonds, of, this is a starting point for a timeline. And you can see, I'm here. In December of 2012, it sold $10 million bonds. And again, this is something that, you know, is a work in progress. Spring, sell 20 million in bonds, follow the next steps and plan- And you can see, I'm here. In December of 2012, it's self $10 million bonds. And again, this is something that, you know, is a work in progress. Spring, sell 20 million in bonds. Follow the next steps in Plan Con if available for a high school project. And my recommendation to you is regardless of whether Plan Con is available, I recommend moving forward with the high school project. Start discussion and gathering information regarding the configuration of the school district. In other words, what kind of things are we looking at outside the high school? What kind of configurations, consolidations would you want to research? Design the high school project. That's where Hank comes in and does his magic. I have a strong opinion that we should go see the Kraus Innovation Studio at Penn State. And that's really kind of a classroom for the future, of the future. And just to see what a classroom setting should be. In September, complete design process for the high school, that's of 2013. Spring of 2014, place bids for a high school project. June, groundbreaking for a high school project of, again, 2014. And then at the same time, really start making a decision on the configuration of the rest of the school district, consolidation, building closures, grade level configurations, and all those kind of things. So that would, we're kind of doing two things at once. We've concentrated in 2013 on the high school. And now we're going to start, once that project is rolling, we're going to start looking at and making decisions on the rest of the configuration of the school district. In the autumn, now, again, this is really rough. This is Brett and I just sitting down and thinking how this would happen. Just, it's an idea, it's a starting place. Autumn of 14, sell 10 million, $10 million in bonds. Start research and design a building project that aligns with the configuration of the school district. September of 15, make final decision on design of the second building project, which would be your configuration, and sell 15 million in bonds. This figure may only be 4 million if there is no Plan Con because the existing millage, depending on Plan Con, will be different than how much money we can borrow. June of 16, we finish the high school project with no problems. Hank? Start the second project in June of 18, finish second project. Now, again, I'm going to say for the 98th time, this is a document that is a work in progress. But I thought that it would be valuable for you to look at just as a starting place of what can happen and how this can look. Is this going to be something that we're setting in stone? Absolutely not. However, it is, I think, in the short term, in the next 12 months, a pretty, you know, it's a good place to start at least. So, I thought that would be helpful to offer you a framework as we're talking about that, okay? You may decide at some point in the next 12 months that, you know what? We're not going to do anything else but the high school. That's fine. We just put big X across the rest of this page, okay? So, throwing this out there.
I've not seen the Kraus Innovation Studio.
Yeah.
Does having Plan Con versus not Plan Con have, give you, if you don't have Plan Con, you have fewer restrictions on being able to do some things that may be harder to do? Or does some of the innovation we're trying? I'm a little worried we may be somewhat ahead of the curve in how we think a building may look for public education based on what we're doing. Plan Con may be behind that curve, or at least behind us, and saying, whoa, wait a second, we can't do that with our reimbursable money. Well, if Plan Con's not existent, well, actually, not going to help us on dollars, but will help us as far as having more freedom.
There might be more flexibility.
Freedom of, flexibility is better word.
Flexibility.
Is that accurate, Hank?
Yes, that would be accurate.
Okay.
So again, this is just, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I thought that, I just felt the sense that we might want to have something that you can, you know, try to offer a framework for you. This is, this is open for discussion. We'll have now, next month, next week, I'm sorry. You can come and egg my card tomorrow, do whatever you think you need to do. Good luck. Anyway, so, there you have it.
Okay, thanks, Tony.
Thanks, Tony. Chris, can I just talk about the process and timing?
Thank you very much, Tony. That's Chris Brewer, evening, everyone. As bond counsel follows me, talk a little bit about the logistics and what you might, if you decide to move forward and how you go about accomplishing that. Tony spent a lot of time in the numbers, talking about $10 million. And you might remember from October 8th, when you passed a resolution telling our firm to get started on this and move forward, that $10 million is a magic number, not just because it would be our first chunk of change to work toward this project as you continue to find it. Of course, it is also a number that has relevancy in the federal tax laws. Because as it happens, if on should sell, investors who buy bonds from PNC, and incidentally, PNC is not your direct lender here. They're getting bonds sold for you as a broker. And so we have to work through some steps here as to how that contract comes together and how the borrowing comes together. But the investors who buy bonds will have a greater interest in buying your bonds if they are, if you as an issuer are at a $10 million or under level per calendar year. When the tax code was changed back in 86, and we've got a continuation of tax exemption from municipal bonds, investors who buy your bonds keep all that money to themselves and don't pay off the same any tax on the interest income. There was an allowance though for banks as investors to give them a little extra tax break, a little better after-tax yield when banks buy bonds from small governments. Why was all this? Real quickly. Tax code, always treat the banks better for this purpose because banks are in the business of lending money. If you as an investor borrow money to buy a tax-ent bond, you'll not get to keep the interest deduction on it. Banks get to keep interest deductions as well as the interest income that's tax-free, except for when they lend money to larger governments. Because in 86, when they tried to tighten up the tax code, they decided the state of California and the city of New York didn't need all the same kind of breaks. And the local government lobby stepped in and said, we, smaller governmental units, still like to go to the local bank and borrow money. And so a $10 million rule came into place that hasn't changed, except during stimulus years when it was raised. It ought to be raised for inflation, but it went back to $10 million. Point is that if you decide to move forward on this and like the process of getting some money now, bring it to work, knowing that you're going to need more as the project unfolds, then the calendar years, this is all tax planning now, the calendar years become very important. And what is going to be, what's being recommended to you by professionals is to get an authorization done next week that will allow this bond issue to get sold in the marketplace and closed before 12:31 or 12. So that you'd use this year's $10 million opportunity. Doesn't cost you anything. In fact, it only benefits you that you can designate these as bank-qualified bonds. And then when 2013 comes, whether you want to use that year or not, or have other things to do, in 2014, you have an opportunity every year. And it's no different than when you take your personal deductions and exemptions on your own 1040. It's a once-a-year kind of opportunity. There is value to getting forward and keeping the bank qualification on these bonds and getting them done and qualified, if you're so inclined. Besides it being, again, $10 million as a start on the project, there is the fact that, as Tony's already mentioned, interest rates are this great all-time low. So if that's what you're about, here's what the timing now comes into play. In order for Tony to sell bonds out to the investors in the marketplace, he needs to have the bond rating and/or bond insurance as part of his overall package he's going to sell to investors. And credit call just happened here the other day. Of course Moody's was shut down, and Sandy, things aren't moving as quickly as we'd like. So there's no way that PNC is ready at your meeting next week to actually make your proposal to buy the bonds. In Pennsylvania, you have to bring two things together under the way our debt act is written, your authorizing resolution and the offer from PNC Capital Markets to purchase bonds at specified rates. So our choices are that once the rating is in hand and once things are known, the exact amount is determinable, we can schedule a special meeting and get the action all done. Or on Monday night, you can do what many, many more of our clients are now finding it much more advantageous to, and that is pass the debt authorizing resolution on a so-called not-to-exceed basis, that you put into place the legal paperwork I need in the official action or vote that says, yes, we do want to sell these bonds. But with a delegation of authority to the board president with a consultation with the administration to accept a contract once you have it all nailed down. Once the rating is in place, once the market has access, once PNC can make that actual formal commitment. Many of our clients, and I think in fact this board may have also in the past, used the not-to-exceed as a way to separate the rigidity of board meeting schedules from movements in the marketplace. So that, you know, we're not trying to sell bonds the very night when, in fact, something went awry in the market or investors weren't as interested. Instead leaving your underwriter, the greatest flexibility to kind of get up and jump in when you're seeing no other bonds being sold or great movement rates to your favor, whatever it might be, that it gives you that sort of tax rate. So knowing also that from the time we would have both the authorization in place and the contract signed, I need about three days to get it closed. Your bond paperwork and hair starts your DCD to have your bonds approved. You've got to bring all the paperwork together. Bonds aren't a whole lot different than when you buy a house and you sign the papers one night and about a month later you close and actually have the mortgage completed, title transfer. So we're starting to run a little tight on time here. But I'd like to recommend you get a vote on next Monday. And that will put us in a position to sell the bonds at liberty in the next week or so and get you to close them before the holidays and before the union. If that makes sense, you know, I'll take questions on that. What I have for you tonight, I've already drafted, so sort of seeing the administration, seeing the bond resolution. It's a somewhat lengthy document because again, in Pennsylvania, the resolution really represents your legislative action, represents your contract with bondholders. So it sets out definition of project, it sets out terms and arrangements for how the bonds get paid. It sets out a number of tax covenants, securities law covenants, provisions to follow the remedies. Hopefully, they're ready to go there. It accepts bond insurance if you have a good bond insurance proposal. It awards the bonds to PNC as your underwriter. What I'd like to show you tonight real quickly, I'm throwing this in so we can do the paperwork. I don't know if you all sometimes get electronic from Brett. I provided this electronically. I'll have a full resolution, you'll like to take this form next week. But tonight, saving trees, I just copied a couple, three pages. One, the heading on this still contains a blank. And Tony and I have worked on this a little bit, we need to work on it some more. Under Pennsylvania law, if you pass a not-to-exceed resolution for debt, you have to specify the maximum amount of money that you might borrow. And the state tells us in their interpretation that you have to specify the maximum principal that's going to mature in every single year. Given that we've just tonight talked and yet, and it seems like, you know, you might all be inclined to the modified rabbit, I had the decline in option three, Tony's going to have a challenge to come up with a schedule for incorporation of this document that will give him that continued flexibility if markets move and/or your mind changes a little bit, to lay in principle in the years where it makes the most sense. So the number that you may come up with is probably going to be actually more than $10 million. You're not going to borrow more than $10 million. But we're going to need an authorization of a little more so that there's liberty and freedom in any given year to have the right amount of principal mature. Now, I hope that doesn't sound like lawyer's book, don't be legal, because it's not. It is the fact that if we pass a resolution with a specified schedule and it happens to say in year X, the principal payment's going to be 500,000. And yet markets move and rates change a little bit. And Tony's trying to get the right precise, you know, lay of this debt on your schedule. And he needs to have a principal payment that year of 505,000 just to fit all the legal requirements. Then we've missed. We've got to come back and do what we did, start again. We don't want to do that. So we're going to recommend to you, the schedule that's going to be attached to this will actually have a little cushion every one of those years. So we never have to worry about being out of line. And in the end, the total amount ever to be borrowed on this issue will though be $10 million. So all those numbers that can come down with this. We need a little room, not knowing for sure, where rates move and where we can switch around. It's almost like having the balloon and you squeeze the air until it pops up over again. You've got to take it in. The second, so the title was the one thing. The next page, I have on there a copy out of page five of this document, the project description. We're specifying to high school and other projects, so with maximum flexibility about where these dollars go. Under Pennsylvania law, you have to have a project, you have to, the state can hold up what it is you're doing. But we don't have to tie your hands, in this case, to support the idea that you can move the money around. You're working on the project, the letter is clear that what you have in mind. And yet you're not making a final decision on the project. You're not awarding construction contracts. You're giving some money to the banks, the good interest rates to get forward. You can use this one though, if you wish, on preliminary costs that you may have incurred or foresee. Usually, architects' fees, surveys, things like that that will come up.
That little extra money you described beyond the $10 million, would that money be in a clearing fund for use through the process of actually seeing through the transaction?
When you said clearing fund, to me, a clearing fund is really the one-day settlement account we use when the bond monies come in and you get the bills paid.
Or some other form of best practice?
There'll be a, there'll be a construction account. Your construction account will be separately held, separate accounting, separate investments. You'll draw from it. Brett and I can talk in detail as this unfolds. Sometimes our clients do take the construction monies and start to put it into accounts. But if you do that, then it just becomes awkward to move it back out of those accounts if that's not the direction you go. And the best example of that is capitalized interest. You could take the capitalized interest, you're going to be borrowing interest. You're going to allocate within the borrowed monies, money to pay the interest to avoid any impact on the budget in the short run. You could go ahead and send that over to a paying agent, but if you do that, then you can't get it back. So most likely, you would have a separate identified construction fund, bond proceeds are in it. But I wouldn't necessarily recommend any of accounting of it until you get to, you know, what you want to do. However, when the day comes, you decide to pay some interest on the bonds with it, decide to pay some preliminary costs, you decide you need a survey, you don't want to reach into the general fund for it, you draw a lot of construction. It'll be good to have that fund too because then, because I'm a believer in account, we're going to keep something of Plan Con. You'll need to make an accounting of all the monies as the project unfolds for the Department of Education. So we have it in a construction from the start. The auditor alternates is there and we can monitor every dollar to the project.
Can you take an educated guess on what type of money number we're talking about by a little extra? What ballpark number?
A ballpark number for what, I'm sorry?
The extra money that we might have to look at to work through the $10 million.
In other words, how big's that number going to look like on the, uh?
12 million?
12, 13 million at most.
But let me turn you to the next page on my handout in section 1101. And again, you don't have to be all this late tonight, if you take a look at it and send to Brett, any comments or comments you might like, and we'll make them. But what we're talking about here is in that section 1101, the award of the bonds. We're going to award these bonds to PNC, they're buying the bonds from you. They're going to lend you money because you're going to sell them your merchandise, your merchandise for your bonds. There is to be a determination that the contract that gets presented to you serves your best financial interests. The president's going to do that at the point, it's all in the business nature. And if you all come to an agreement, you're going to sign the contract. We're going to sign a contract that's acceptable because it's going to be with interest rates that we like. It's going to produce a maximum amount of proceeds, I'm reading down now toward the end of that, available for the bonds which maintains their characters, qualified tax-ent obligations. That's that magic bank qualification number. So you can't go over $10 million. Otherwise, if we were to go over $10 million, the bonds would not be so-called bank-qualified. The banks as investors wouldn't buy them. And it's now secured as this thing. PNC doesn't want the bonds at those rates if they can't sell them to investors at those same conditions. So they need to keep to $10 million. Where the $10 million falls year to year is what he's going to fine-tune to get you the bond repayment structure you want and to fit into the models that he's shown you there. So he's going to work from the idea of $10 million, he's going to add a little principal every year. Bonds sometimes, quite often in fact, don't sell to the investor right at the stated interest rate. We're all used to going with bank-to-buy certificate of deposit. Bank says rates 1%, they say, here's my money, give me my 1%. But bonds often sell at a price higher or lower than par, depending on how investors are booking into the portfolio. Right now, we're seeing a lot of bonds sold with originally should premium, meaning investors will actually pay more than 5,000 for the investment because they want it to return to them a rate, a regular flow of cash that's not available in today's market. If the rate on a two-year investment right now is only, say, 1%, but somebody's buying an investment for a retirement account where they want it to produce a certain amount of cash, they'll actually pay more for it so it might produce a rate, payment rate, they say 1.5 or 2. But you're not going to pay 2%, the market's on 2%, so they'll pay you a premium on that bond. They'll pay you more than par. Likewise, bonds sometimes settle at discount. Discount's a little easier to explain, it's like points on a mortgage. We've all, if you've had a mortgage ever and you paid points, you bought down your rate. And so sometimes bonds settle at originally should discount. And that's you sort of buying down your rate because you'll get the bond sold to the investor at less than par, pay a little less than 5,000 face. And that's because the rate you got for that money was under what the rate should have been, your bought-down rate. So if you've all seen points on a mortgage, that's originally should discount on bond issue. But bond issues being a little more sophisticated, I suppose, than how mortgage have the flip side of it, which is originally should premium. That'll push her on rates, and when that pushes her on rates, depending on buyers. Tony goes out, he's your agent, trying to find buyers. And if he gets a very attractive buyer that comes forward and says, we're interested in Penn Trafford, and we're interested in a million dollars like this. and we're interested in a million dollars like this. Well, here's the year we want, here's some things we want. If it's a good offer from that investor, they want to accept that on your behalf. And yet he needs them to be able to be flexible. He needs to get a work to the right kind of overall configuration. That's all that's about. We're not going to issue more than 10 million. Questions for me? Again, given timing and so forth, although I want to make it clear that you don't have to do this, number one, you don't have to do any of this. Number two, if you don't like the idea of not to exceed resolution and still want to get it done this year, we can come to a special meeting. But I don't know why you would do that. The markets could be very, very used to this kind of process, we're going to get more and more with the clients. So I'm pretty sure, if we look back, we've maybe have done this one at a time on the refunding where we wanted to have that great flexible market access. And that's of course because you're going to put authority in your board, the president's hand, and he's not here tonight. So you're all going to have to get in a quiet time, do as we say.
But I think we would notify the entire board before that happened, you know, send you all an email and if you have any questions or concerns at that time, we'll address them before we, you know, move forward.
And nobody on the professional side wants this push that you, we want to just give you the flexibility that they can get this done, meet your goals of having some money, accessing these good rates, closing by year end, preserving all of your options.
I'm still struggling slightly with the 10 million dollar limit and the 2 million dollar extra money. I'm trying to reconcile that in my mind, how we do that.
You're going to give a delegation authority in the law. You're going to say to, you're, the way Pennsylvania law is done, this document is as long as it is because it is required by the statute, it's contained certain provisions. One of the provisions it has to contain is the maximum amount you might borrow, not only a total, but year by year. The maximum rate at which you might borrow. When Tony gives us a final schedule for next week, it's going to have interest rates much harder than he's talking about, okay? And it's going to be year by year. Bonds are not sold like your car loan or your mortgage is sort of one investment to one person. There will be a universe of buyers, some of whom might just buy one bond, some of whom might buy a million, and some, just like when you go to the bank to buy a CD, want the investment at a two-year period, they want the investment at a 10-year period, okay? They've got investment goals. Maybe the money's being set aside for retirement, maybe it's being set aside for junior college, something. And so they come along and say, I'd like an eight-year investment. And so the final bonds that are sold are really pieces of debt sold to lots of different people. Is if you bought a one-year bond, you bought a three-year bond, you bought a five-year bond, you bought a 10-year bond. And when the district goes to pay people back, to pay Brett his interest for a year or so and then pay him off, and he's got his money back, he's discharged. Keep paying longer, three years here, and by the time we get to you, we've been paying you interest every six months. And then finally, after the 19th payment, in the 20th payment, we pay you your principal back and your final interest payment, semi-annual, okay? Because of all this sort of configuration of all these different investors in a pot, we just need the flexibility. Because you then as investor might be bargaining for interest rates that when your interest rate, because it's different than his interest rate, is mixed in by the computer together. Again, it's not a flat rate, flat rate's easy. Flat rate gets you a home mortgage and the payment is down to a penny every month. Bonds are never going to be the penny because they're $5,000 apart and every interest rate is different along the scale. So when you come home and say to Tony, I'll buy the bond, I'm going to take a good yield that you guys will be happy with, I'll live with that as an investor, because remember, investors are on the side of the fence, he's bargaining for you. But you say, I want to bid that original issue premium. I want to pay a little more because I want the rate. And you say, I want a 4% rate on this bond and I don't care what it costs me to buy it. If the schedule he gave me capped out at 370, stop. I didn't have legal authority to go over 370. So less of an investor come along wanting a 4%, no matter what it costs him to get it, we're going to have a rate here that's high enough that we can't go around it. Even though, we're never going to do this unless you get a final proposal you like in its final effective terms. The same happens with principal. Because a lot of buyers come along who are buying at the original issue discounted price, which produces less cash dollars. And if they're fronting investors or backing investors, it's my air, my balloon, my toothpaste in my tube again. I'm squeezing one and it's popping up the other. So we've got to allow maximums high enough every single year that we just don't fail. Otherwise, there's no point in going about it this way. We ought to sit back away until it actually gets the bond sold, call you up, try to get a meeting together and get it off. The other problem, meeting is not as important for you all, it has to be advertised in the paper at least two days in advance. And so as soon as you move around, as I give you the dates, I need a whole week, okay? I can't be, we can't get any quicker than that. It's going to be at least a week for advertising deadlines and so forth, much like your schedules. And that's what then takes away the flexibility and it'd be a lot on your toes in the market.
It's been 20 years, 20 years since I did this. I need some refreshness myself. The 2 million we make in interest on us, this is because we don't use that 10 million immediately.
Correct?
I don't want the number to turn you down, but yes, when you borrow the money, cash from the bank and you can reinvest it. And you earn interest until such time as you do get it spent.
Now, in our situation without PlanCon now, that reinvestment's going to have to be paid for the architect and your fee and his fee and et cetera. And without PlanCon, how much does the Department of Education have a restriction on us anymore? You know, if you, PlanCon, you're bringing out, it'd be, you know, A, B, C, D, you had to go through all the different steps. Are they all eliminated now?
You're talking two different things. You're talking the restrictions from the architectural side with PlanCon and possibly, I think you might be talking about the interest restrictions you're allowed to carry on your money.
That could be true, I said it's been 20 years, so I could be putting these together very, that's correct.
There's a couple of different things. There are, not only the, there are federal tax laws that say when you go to borrow money in a tax exempt arena, because Uncle Sam, again, allows you this sort of privilege, borrow at rates that are lower than the regular market because your investors don't pay tax. And so, you know, at least in a pure economic model, the typical investor in a municipal bond should be motivated to take that investment at about 67% or 70% of what any other regular investment might earn them because they're not giving anything out of Uncle Sam, if they're a high tax bracket investor. The rule is there to say that when you borrow on a tax free bond, you need to be able to expect, and you're going to certify, that you think you'll spend the money, maybe 5% of it, over three years. And that's nothing other than sort of good faith commitment by you, that you have a real project, that you're pursuing it diligently, that you have a plan. It's not the exact plan yet, you don't have to be ready to award the contracts, but that you're going to move forward on it. And from what I know, knowing that you've been talking about the project now for a couple of years and some others, I feel that you can make that certification. That certification gives you the opportunity in the law to invest this money actually at rates higher than you borrowed it at, to make money on the money. As it happens, that was something Uncle Sam and the IRS were worried about for years and years and years. In the market that we're in today and have been in for a while, actually, that's just not happening. You're going to get a great borrowing cost and this man here will deserve a big bonus if he can get you that rate back in the investment. Now, but rates can change. Hopefully, you know, in an ideal world, you borrow this, my loan rates do come up and you start making some money on it. So that's offset the restrictions and we have to watch.
That's how we built the Warrior Center, put the artificial tracks in, the stadium works, everything, it wasn't.
That's known as arbitrage and it was a great run when we had it and maybe it'll come back.
It was very, very beneficial.
Because of arbitrage, there was a time, I think, when PVE monitored the construction funds and the investments and the proceeds of those investments much more carefully than they have been for a while because they sort of wanted in on that game too. And so they had a lot of rules about when they would start reimbursing you or how long they'd reimburse you, capitalize interest for you and that. We should keep all those records, but at the moment, there are a lot less significance in affecting your bottom line than there used to be. And if PlanCon does go away, this is where I agree, then they ought to have none of that.
Thank you, that's what I'm saying. It should have any control at all, if they, you know, they're not paying any part of the bill.
That would seem fair to me. Of course, what I think's fair, when it happens in our focus, it's broad at some point. Can I answer further first?
If anyone thinks of anything, you know, after the meeting tonight, pass it through me and I'll get ahold of either Chris or Tony as appropriate and get back to you as quickly as I can.
I see some plus and I see some minus.
If you can generally nod your heads, I'm going to go ahead and do an ad in the paper for next week. Assuming you want to take action on this, we'll be at the meeting.
Great.
If you have questions for me, please get them through. At the moment, I'm having a little bit of a scheduling issue for next Monday night. So I have the document here, I'm airing it here personally, but if you tell me you think you need somebody from our firm, you know, I'll have another lawyer here, for sure. He won't be as good looking, but he's likely to be. That's it. Thank you all.
Thanks, gentlemen.
This is something, and you know, this is how we operate. We talk about things at this meeting, this will give you a chance to think about any questions that you have. We have a week for you to contact Brett or myself and then we can, or you can make a decision on Monday. Okay, moving on, and information, in November, November, at the next meeting, Mr. Marasti will have a wonderful presentation about some things that are happening at McCall Elementary School. And so we look forward to that. Are there any other matters that, or questions that you have, any other matters before the board? Yes?
I have one, this is basically a thank you and appreciation. Our, through Dr. Butler's initiative and certainly involvement with the students and principals, we sent all our kids to Bushy Run for a revamping and re-history lesson and re-formorization with that area. 4,000 students during the last month or so. I got the privilege, maybe it was out in McCall a little too long, but would be a part of that process myself in the last week and it was an outstanding event. Our kids, our students were so well behaved, even the high school students of intensity, they were a little different and a little standoffish. Got involved, they were part of the process. Little kids enjoyed being Indians and British and running up and down the hill and appreciating what was a part of the process. I thought it was outstanding, aspect of developing appreciation for our community and our history. So I congratulate all of you for being supportive. That's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Trey. And that was a good experience we sat. I think we have maybe one group, they'll have to go in the spring and because of the weather of last week. But we ran basically all 4,000 of our students through, 250th anniversary of the Bushy Run Battlefield is next summer. We thought that that was important, you know, the heritage of this area. And the teachers and principals did an outstanding job getting the kids ready. It wasn't just showing up and seeing everything, it was working in school leading up to that so they were prepared to go. And they did a great job and of course, Matt did the bus work, which would have taken me two or three weeks. He did it in a couple hours, so outstanding and all the, very positive reviews on that. So I think that's a good opportunity that the school district gave our students. Moving on to athletics and extracurricular, we have, we'll have some conference requests and accept some resignations. Budget and finance, if the board wants to approve a general bond obligation issue, that will be on there. Building grounds and safety, we will have a custodial hire for you. Moving down to personnel and curriculum, there's some FMLA request, leave, leave requests, approve substitute teachers, issue professional contracts, approve an expulsion agreement, approve some more conference requests, accept a resignation and employee personnel at the time. And finally, another policy, Public Relations Legislative Title II, a second reading of Policy 123.1, recognition and utilization of club sports, and the second reading of Policy Number 249, bullying and intimidation, as well as accept and file information committee meeting minutes of October 1st, 2012. And finally, appoint a CWCTC Joint Operating Committee Representative, which will be suggested at Nick, if he is willing to take on that role again.
Yeah, that's, that's fine, may I?
Okay.
All right, you've got his arm up behind his back.
Very good. Finally, just as information, we have coming into the district Thursday at Harrison Park, where all of our third, fourth and fifth grade students will be able to witness, talk to a chainsaw artist. We'll have a chainsaw artist coming in and explaining that to the students, third, fourth and fifth graders from all over the district, not just Harrison Park, we'll be busing kids in. And then Friday, he will spend time at the high school, talking to some of the art classes as well and doing demonstrations of chainsaw art, a new folk art in America. So if you are interested in coming, it's at Harrison Park, behind Harrison Park, Thursday starting at 9:30 and at the high school starting 7:30, 8 o'clock on Friday. It should be fun and exciting. And don't forget tonight, after the meeting, we do have a tour of the school. Mr. DiNapoli, do we still have the movie? No movie. Cut the movie, okay. So Mr. DiNapoli will lead a tour of the school for the board. Again, this is a way for the board, as we researched different options for the school district, for you to get a good idea of what the school's all about. Mr. Placco will be along as well to answer any questions. So that will start, probably within about five minutes, we'll start from here. If you need to go to the restroom, you can do that. So that's all I have, Mr. Vice President.
We have no visitors to the city, no one's signed in. Remind you of the regular board meeting on Monday, November 12, 2012, at 7 o'clock back at the high school library. Thank you for coming this evening.
We can just ask questions.
Okay, yes. We have questions, sir.
I had a question about, okay, we're borrowing 10 million, but I see 55 on here. Is that going to be, get it, pay it off, get it, pay it off, or just keep lumping it on?
No, that's, again, and what I tried to explain is, our existing debt, what we have for millage right now equals if there's PlanCon, approximately 55 million, okay? Without PlanCon, it's between 40 and 44 million, okay? Now, right now, we're concentrating on the high school. So and as we talk to the bond people, if we have 30 million out there, we are basically going to do what they call the step-down version. So our payments stay the same, we're just pushing that out there. However, the board at any time can say, no, we're not going to do any other project beyond the high school, okay? And that's the big decision point. They, it says there, do 10 million or, I think I have, I don't have it in front of me right now, equal to 15 million, that's just an example of how it could happen. It doesn't necessarily mean that is what is going to happen.
But that 2.7 each year, that's the interest and principal, the support?
55 with PlanCon. 40 to 44 without PlanCon.
Of money not spent. You know, if you don't spend that for a year or so, then that's where you get that money. If you spend it, then you don't, there's no interest on it. So that's why I'm doing it now to help us. We didn't start groundbreaking or anything right now, you know, so that's when you start, we start groundbreaking, you start drawing from it.
Right, yeah.
Stated in a little different way though, I believe, would be that 2.4 is staying under the current millage debt service levels we're operating under now. Two, nine, nine and change.
10.04.
Well, 10.04 includes the new, I'm just talking about the current debt service. We targeted staying at the current debt service level we're at, any more, any project work we do.
So that's, you know, that's, this is a very, that's a very flexible die. If you look at the diagram, it gets a little, it gets a lot less specific the longer it goes out because there's a lot of moving parts.
So basically, if we wouldn't borrow anything, after a couple of years, we're going to have 2.7 cash coming in, but that budgeted item goes away and that's going to do it basically in the bank.
That money will go, yes.
Well, I think a fair part of that discussion would be our buildings are in such a situation that we can responsibly ignore the fact that there's a lot of work that needs done. A lot of deferred work could have been done in the past and that's one of the things that we, I speak for myself and I'll speak for the board, recognize that if we don't start getting to these things in a fairly prompt timeframe, they're going to get worse. They're going to get the appointments to be called, it's a lot more, so we have to. So we have to put things in motion to try to address.
But 2.7 dollars you do it, you could probably stretch that 2.7 off and make some really good things go.
That's, that's our hope.
2.7 every year, one building would be nice.
But you're right, for example, the board only, that's 30 million dollars, there's 40 million dollars out there that can be used.
My apologies for not, that's not a lot of additional time, we're sufficient time for questions, but we have the time and are there any others? Is there anything else in this particular question?
Oh, veterans say coming up, thank you to all you veterans.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Me, during that, I mean, I always say, can't say the word.